Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this Administrative Informal Workshop Session to Order on this 23rd day of 2025, 3:30 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President and the School Board Chamber, our Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. We are now on to our administrative matters and reports. We do have a few here. I'm going to pass around the VSBA Annual Convention, one-to-one meetings with the superintendent, and school visits with the superintendent, and we're going to start to the right here. Ms. Rogers.
Thanks so much. First, I want to wish our Jewish community a happy Rosh Hashanah this evening, as we are in the middle of Rosh Hashanah. The other thing I kind of wanted to do is kind of follow up on our conversation about our transportation and the Zoom app. This week, I did have actually an incident where my daughter's bus didn't show up, and I couldn't find it on the Zoom app, and so I had to call Transportation to find out what was going on. It took quite some time to get through to Transportation. I was actually on hold for, I was ringing for eight minutes and 46 seconds, and then I got someone who was very nice, but they had to then contact the bus driver to find out that the bus had broken down, and that there was a mechanic, and that the bus was going to be on its way, but it took a total of 20 minutes to find that out. Is there a way, Dr. Robertson, for the Zoom app to be able to have the bus driver communicate either to Transportation or to the parents, thank you, sorry, Mr. Freeman, so that we have less issues with communications, so parents know if there's a problem, what's going on? Because again, if I'm a parent, and I was actually going to work that day, 20 minutes is a long time out of my morning, when I'm supposed to be getting myself ready for work, to try and figure out where my daughter's bus is, and if it's coming, do I got to take her in? So I'm just wondering about, like, what is the communication piece on the Zoom app?
So the simple answer, what you described is yes. That's the goal. That's what we're shooting for. Zoom app is new this year.
Right.
Lot of learning that's going on, and given our unique programs and the way we do things, we're learning a lot. Our after-action review is tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, and the parent communication part is going to be one of the elements we're discussing. So, and let me be clear about AAR. We're not solving anything in the AAR. We're identifying the things that we're going to then break out into smaller groups and solve, and we will include that one in there, as well as the feedback related to the situations where we need to ensure that we're trained and executing in a way that makes the Zoom app act how the person on the receiving end expects it to, which is, I get to see what's actually going on with the current condition of transportation for my child.
Right. And so, again, the bus was stuck at Strawbridge, and it needed maintenance, which totally understandable, but that 20-minute lag of me, and then that's me having to communicate with Transportation, them having to then communicate with the bus driver, then that comes, like, she had put me on hold, talked to the bus driver. So that's why I'm asking, does the Zoom app then kind of cut some of that out? So either the bus driver can communicate, and they can put it through to the app, to the parents, hey, there's a maintenance issue, your bus is coming, or whatever. So this way, I think it'll cut down on some of our parents being frustrated, so that communication piece. So that's what I was really wanting to follow up with.
That's the goal.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Green.
Thank you. As many of you know, each year, schools are required to review their safety plans to help ensure the well-being of students and staff. It's important, and we know that our safety procedures are continuously monitored at all schools. For special events, such as football games, graduations, additional security measures are implemented to keep everyone safe. I wanted to let my colleagues know that I have requested a safety and security discussion be added to the closed session agenda for our school board meeting. The intent is to consider whether the current procedures that we have in place at school board meetings need to be updated. School board meetings often bring together large groups of our students, staff, parents, families, special guests, speakers, and the chambers are always full. Right now, we're just at workshops, so by the time we get to the public meeting, probably every seat will be filled. It is essential for our community to understand that we are committed to making sure everyone feels safe and comfortable during school board meetings. I hope we can soon review our current security practices for the school board meeting. This discussion is important and should not be delayed. We have a responsibility to ensure the safety of our public when they attend school board meetings.
Vice Chair Weems.
Yes, thank you. So we had the Harbor Hope Center Regional Governing Board meeting last week, and we thought it would be a great idea to offer the five cities' school boards a chance to go and visit Harbor Hope Center and tour the school. And as I said in the email, I will pass this around. The dates are for Wednesday or Thursday, October 1st and 2nd, or Wednesday and Friday, October 22nd and 24th. So I'll pass this around. If you would like to sign up, we'll make it happen. Thank you so much.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Brown. I'd just like to put forth this, thank you. I attended the AIR Show at Oceano, which included the STEM events, and it included showcasing our various schools. Over 500 students attended this event, and I would like to thank the administration for having to put that together, the teachers, teacher assistants, the bus drivers, the volunteers and parents that showed up at that event, and the principals. I'd just like to thank you for your passion for exposing our students to various educational opportunities. It was great. It was hot, but it was a nice event. I enjoyed the students, and not only did they show them the STEM projects, there's so many, and I'm going to think of trying to announce all that they had, but they actually literally did work, sit down, and were doing paperwork, the students filling out everything. I'd just like to thank the administration for making sure that happened, and it was wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers.
Thanks. I just wanted to support Dr. Green's request for safety protocol review. With the current political climate, I myself have been targeted by some groups, and I think that it's important that we do ensure not only the safety of ourselves, my colleagues, but especially the students and staff that are in this building, especially during our meetings. I want to make sure that we are, we do review those policies, so I support that.
Okay, so that's fine. We're going to discuss that on October 14th. Some of those are policy discussions. That would be Policy Review Committee, and those are public conversations. Those are not closed session topics when we get to those conversations. So if there's any resulting conversation, we have to make sure that we tread carefully so that we're not going into things that really belong out in the public. With that, we are now on to the Tri-Campus additions update, and we welcome Melissa Ingram, Executive Director, Offices of Facility Services.
So, good afternoon. So, good afternoon, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the Board, and Dr. Robertson. So as Executive Director of Facility Services, I am here today to provide you with an update to Tri-Campus additions, which is CIP Project 1-028, and this was formerly Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Replacement Project. So as you know, we have been discussing the tri-campus elementary model for several years. Looking at the map in front of you, moving counterclockwise, east to west, along learning circle, you'll see the tri-campus elementary schools. They are Diamond Springs Elementary, Newtown Elementary, and Betty F. Williams Elementary Schools. After analysis, community meetings, and Board direction last May, the decision was made to reconfigure this campus into two schools instead of three. This change is aimed at strengthening the campus by consolidating resources, reducing student transitions, and creating a more efficient instructional environment for students and staff. Under this new model, Diamond Springs Elementary School will serve pre-K through first grade, and Newtown Elementary School will serve second grade through fifth grade. Information related to the consolidation plan is shown for each of these schools in front of you as well. As we briefed you in the past, one addition would be needed at each school, with more space needed at Newtown Elementary School than at Diamond Springs Elementary School. Diamond Springs Elementary School will require an addition equivalent to about six classroom spaces or 7,400 square feet to accommodate the projected student population of 550 students from the current 470 students in grades pre-K through 1. This is estimated to cost, including design, construction, and site adjustments, between $6 million and $7 million. Newtown Elementary School will require an addition equivalent to 18 classroom spaces, about 22,300 square feet, to accommodate the projected enrollment there that will nearly double from about 400 students today to 740 students under the new grade configuration of second through fifth grades. The preliminary cost estimate for this work is in the range of $16 million to $18 million. Combined, both additions are projected to remain within the $25 million currently allocated in the CIP. We'll now take a look at the conceptual plans for both schools, starting with Diamond Springs Elementary School. So this addition would be on the south side of the building, shown in red, accommodating classrooms and support spaces for these lower levels of pre-K through first grades. Also highlighted in blue areas are spaces where some reconfiguration of existing walls would take place for proper adjacencies for support spaces to grade-level classrooms. Including just left of the addition, you can see carving out a new hallway there to provide access to the new spaces. Site work, including utilities and playground relocations, will also be needed with this addition, which will be constructed while the building is occupied. Next, we'll take a look at the Newtown Elementary School. This addition would also be located on the south side of the building, again, shown in red, accommodating classrooms and support spaces for two additional grade levels in order for the school to support second through fifth grades, using the existing hallways that are extended into the new space, as you can see on the slide in front of you. Shown in blue again is a reconfiguration of walls at one existing space, again, providing for more efficient use of support spaces to grade-level classrooms. This addition will be constructed while the building is occupied, along with required site work, including utilities and playground relocations. So this next slide shows the estimated project timeline. Planning and design work continues until February 2026. We anticipate going out to bid in March 2026, which would allow construction mobilization to begin this coming summer in June 2026, continuing through December 2027. The reconfiguration to the two-school model will occur with move-in at the start of the 2028-29 school year, with the possibility of moving in earlier, depending on, you know, construction timelines and things, and other approval processes, over winter break or spring break of 2028. And this concludes the presentation I have for you today, and I'll happy to take any questions that you might have.
Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a question about, I'm more so, well, I guess for both of them, especially with Newtown, we're adding all of those classrooms and workspaces. I'm concerned about bathroom space. I have worked in elementary schools that have lack of bathroom space, and when you've got a lot of kids that are sick or having to use the bathroom, it can be not good. So especially because we're adding so much to Newtown, is there a plan to accommodate at least a bathroom space for all of those classrooms?
Yes, there are. So you can see, there are some classrooms have bathrooms worked into them as well.
Okay, that's that little space?
There's smaller dark green spaces.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll show those restroom locations. So we tried to be as efficient as possible, spreading them throughout the building. We do have some classroom needs that also require restrooms.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that we are not adding classrooms without a bathroom. A way to go.
Yes, some do with those dark green again.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Green.
And thank you, Ms. Ingram. I know the answer, but I just want to make sure our viewing public has the same information, and I'm looking at the rendering correctly without my magnifying glass. So my question is, I just want to confirm, the only thing that we're adding on to both buildings, minus the little things such as bathrooms, are classrooms.
Correct.
And that's important, so people will know that.
So there are classrooms, again, in the lighter blue are the classroom-level grade sizes. Again, in order for adjacencies to occur, so support spaces such as speech, or tutoring, or special education resource, you'll see in the lighter greens, or the dark green of the restrooms, but the lighter green are some support spaces. So rather than, also allowing accommodation for them, these are, this is, these are Title I schools. So we also had discussed with you all back in May, and then also in the analysis, making sure that support spaces would also be available for the students, even going from the three schools, losing all those spaces at Williams, to the two schools, that we would provide appropriate support spaces for students.
All right. And then the follow-up question, so our public, viewing public also will understand the cost differentiation, is because we're adding more space at Newtown than we are at Diamond Springs, because it is a significant cost difference.
Correct. The addition is much larger. We also are almost doubling the size of the student body population at Newtown Elementary School, so that is a difference, for the cost difference there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions here. The first one is as it relates to the playgrounds. Are those playgrounds going to be moved prior to the construction of the addition so that they can remain in use?
So we'll certainly continue to talk with administration, and we'll ensure that the students have what they need while the building is being constructed. The, we have our playgrounds are on cycles of, you know, renovation, and they're actually at the end of their useful lives as well. So we'll look at, you know, when the appropriate time for construction mobilization might impact the playgrounds themselves, and then we'll work with administration, both Dr. Hamlin's office and the principals there, to make sure the students have what they need while construction is going on, and that we have safety protocol in place so the students can access what they need safely.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to ask, because I do think that that is really important, that we try to limit any disruption to playground equipment usage at these two schools. My other question is, you mentioned that the construction would occur while the students are in the building. Are any portables going to be required to complete the construction?
No, not at this time. We do not anticipate any portables. We might have a construction trailer out on or near sites. However, we do not anticipate at this time any portables needed for students while the renovations are being made. Williams Elementary School will stay occupied while we are doing the construction, and then that again will help, will work on planning. The move-in, you know, is it best to do right at the start of the school year, or a winter or spring break move-in as time, as we get closer to that time?
Okay, that's great. Thank you for all of that. And then one other thing, and I don't know if this is probably a question for Dr. Robertson, but, you know, as we move forward with this process, I think it's important that, you know, the Betty F. Williams name be retained somehow, and I would like to see, you know, possibly some recommendations on how, how we could possibly do that, come forward, maybe next time we discuss this?
Absolutely. There's a policy that guides that work as well. So, yes.
Okay. All right, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on to, oh, Dr. Green.
Mine is a follow-up to your request. Dr. Robertson, is it possible, once you have the recommendations? Dr. Robertson, is it possible, once you have the recommendations, because I have gotten a lot of calls, emails about retaining the name and how it will be respected in the community, once we have recommendations, I would certainly like to get community input, because that community, Betty F. Williams, actually was an active part and resident of that area. So I think it's imperative that our community, my community, have input with regards to the recommendations that the staff bring forward.
Absolutely, Dr. Green, and the ultimate decision's going to be a board decision.
Correct, but I would like to have community input.
Yes, ma'am, we'll build that in to the process.
Thank you.
All right, great. All right, thank you, thank you for all of your hard work on this. I'm very excited about this, and it looks like it's moving forward very well, so, thank you. We are now on to active student meal debt, and we welcome Rachel Amato, Director, Office of Food Services.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown and School Board members. I'm here today to discuss a nationwide challenge for many school divisions. We will be discussing our current picture for active student meal debt, what contributes to the overall increase each year, how our values and regulations impact the issues, as well as our overall operations, and how we look to improve them over time. This chart currently shows the comparison between active student meal debt at the end of school year 2024 and school year 2025. We have an average debt at elementary schools of over a thousand dollars, middle schools over four thousand dollars, and high schools over eleven thousand dollars. You can see the increase is over fifty percent at each school level. I want to share with you our values that align with both the compass to 2030 and the state code of Virginia. We want to continue organizational excellence, so focusing on what matters most, students, is our guiding principle. We want to strive for no impact on students' educational experience, which means we adhere to strict regulations. Students will not be denied a hot meal. We do not take away a meal after it has been served, have them do chores, identify the student in any way. We communicate directly with the student's parents or guardians on meal debt. We will not prohibit them from any extracurricular school activities, and operationally, we never serve an alternate meal. Our division has applied and received state approval to operate thirty-eight schools under the community eligibility provision. These schools represent programs where households receive no-cost meals no matter what. Our division has over twenty-one thousand six hundred students that are benefiting from the CEP program. On this side, you can see the thirty-eight schools listed. Our schools qualify for CEP through data received from the Virginia Department of Social Services. At non-CEP sites, we have an additional thirteen thousand six hundred students that currently qualify for free and reduced benefits. They are not paying for meals. Between those two programs, we have over half our student population receiving no-cost This means that less than fifty percent of our population can accrue meal debt. The households that accrue meal debt often fall into two categories, those that are not eligible based on federal guidelines, and those that do not or are not aware they should file an application. The Office of Food Services operations use a software program called School Cafe. Families create an account for their students to participate in our program, like many common online food service applications, where you can find, add money to your account to pay for items at that restaurant or coffee company. There you can see menus, nutritional information, allergens, create mock trays, make payments, and set up notifications. We accept all payments, both debit and credit, online, and cash and check in person. Students' unpaid meal balances stay on the student account, and School Cafe accounts follow the student from school to school. Parents can set up payment plans with the Office of Food Services. Families are receiving weekly low balance and negative balance messages, and these notifications also include information about reduced-priced meal applications as well. Additional things that are important to know, the Office of Food Services is prohibited for paying for unpaid student meal debt or bad debt by the USDA and the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act. We will accept donations but rarely see follow-through, and when a student becomes inactive, which is only through graduation or moving to another school or school division, we send their negative balances to the city for collections. Through our processes of continuous improvement, we have identified some areas of growth, including early elementary communications, school-to-school connections. For example, if a student attends a CEP school and then moves to a non-CEP school, we are looking to directly communicate with those families. We look forward to expanding our efforts with the Family and Community Engagement Office, and in collaboration with our Communications Department, we are updating our multi-layer communications and hope to support families as best we can. I would like to close my presentation with a reminder to all of our families. We have resources and support available at the Office of Food Services. Applying for free and reduced meals is easy and confidential, and you must reapply each year. Carryover eligibility for the year before expires on October 8th, and you can, of course, apply anytime throughout the year. Thank you. I'm here for any questions the board may have.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. My question is more administrative. Given the tough economic times that a lot of families are experiencing right now, would you guide or recommend that as soon as there is a significant change in income, that the parent or guardian would need to contact Food Services to fill out an application so that we can ensure that services are not disrupted or they incur unnecessary fees? Could you kind of give us a summary of that? Because it's changing every day, because I know I receive some of the phone calls and kind of direct parents to your office.
Absolutely, yes. If anything happens, any kind of life change at all, we would encourage families to reach out to us at the Office of Food Services, absolutely.
Thanks, Chair Williams.
Yes, what is the timeframe, and what is the communication with the parents from outstanding balance to where you send it to the city? And is there a minimum, like if someone owes five dollars, are you going to send that to the city?
So usually it's five dollars, that is the minimum, to the city, and it is only when the student becomes inactive. So that means that the student has to change from a school that is outside of our division or has graduated in order for us to send it to the city for collections? Does that answer? Not if they're currently enrolled. So this is only about active students that are currently enrolled in our programs.
Right. So I'm currently enrolled, and I owe, and I'm a second grader, and I owe fifty dollars. What is now the process for that?
The process is we communicate, 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 communicate.
And then you don't send it to the city until I leave the school division, and then are you going to send that to the city ten years later after I graduate?
Possible, yes.
Okay, okay, let me, let me think about.
Just another point, when the city, when the city does collections, that money doesn't come back to us.
Or a small portion of it, but yes.
Yeah, so we're looking at outstanding debt over quarter million dollars.
Right. Now, before that, like you said, you communicate, does this individual school send out emails, you know, Ms. Williams, you owe five dollars, or you owe, and then just continue, and then do I go up to the school and pay that, or can I do it online or either?
Online, at the school, at the office.
Okay, okay.
Through the mail.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
I think, I mean, I think Ms. Williams asked some good questions in sense of collections, because, you know, I'm also curious, you know, how much labor do we put into minimal collections, and then the recovery rate of, you know, claims and whatnot, but also, is the collection claim against the student, or is it against the family member? Say they become an adult, how's that work?
So it does go to the household?
The house, so to the family, so the debt wouldn't follow the person once they turned eighteen, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't think it could. I was just trying to make sure I understood. I did have a couple of questions.
And I can just clarify, the law that changed in twenty-two point one, seventy-nine point seven says you can't file a lawsuit against them. That was changed a number of years ago, so we can when they're leaving, but as a current student, we can't file a lawsuit against them to get this.
Cool. And, well, first, my first thing I just wanted to say is I love the School Cafe. I use the website just for adding balance, it's great, because I see my kids lunch, I'm always like, all right, am I buying lunch for my child today, you know? It's fantastic working app, and it's great user experience. I'm also on the naughty list sometimes and get those nice little text messages reminding myself to add balance. So if my colleagues would like to see an example of what the message looks like, I'll be the first transparent person to say, I got a couple of text messages, but my balance is good. So I think jumping to page three, slide six, where we talked about families who have not applied but could be eligible for benefits, do we have an idea of, like, what's the ballpark, like a guesstimate? How many people are in this bucket, would you say?
I, I wouldn't have a guesstimate without doing some research.
Yeah, or is that something that we can figure out?
I think that's the best way to put it, is we don't know, but we're trying to explore that. So we've been working with the Dossel team for how do we explore that and provide supports? So big picture, just remember what she set up is, over fifty percent of our students are not required to pay for meals, just because of where they live.
Yeah.
And the school that they're going to. So that paints a picture of, so number one, anybody who's incurring meal debt right now doesn't have a demonstrated need not to. But what you're describing, which is the concern that we have, and we've been working with schools on, is how do we assist with identifying those that may have the need and may not know? And I know this came fast and furious, and this is the first time you've ever heard of it, but for example, the situation that Rachel mentioned very briefly in the presentation is, if your family and your kids went to a CEP school, you didn't have to do a thing, and your families received free meals for the duration of their time there. But if you then went and moved on to a middle school, there was not a CEP school, there's no apparent change to you as a parent that you needed to do anything different, but now you're getting billed and may not understand. So we're trying to strengthen our communications to ensure that there are no gaps in when families transition in that kind of environment, and there's some other environments that we're looking at to be able to figure out. Now, I know that doesn't answer your question, which your question was, is do we have an idea of the percentage? What I'm trying to share with you is we're working on how to understand with the importance of some of the nuances that are being described of a change in family's condition, or they went from a C to P or another one, whatever condition that might have happened where a family didn't know that they might have been eligible, and then they have the opportunity where we provide the resources and support so that they can. Does that help?
Yeah, every day, a unique problem to solve, right?
Right.
Wrong. And if I understand correctly, as, you know, when there's.
So another great, great point mentioned is the confidentiality is a challenge as well, because, again, we need to keep confidential while still having good communications, so there's a balance that we provide there. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's very difficult, Mr. Cummings, for a school to even know which students are on that list, because they aren't provided access to who's on the free and reduced list that they can generally just refer to and see who's not on there, and reach out to that family. So I think to Dr. Green's point, that communication of what access, they had a QR code on the presentation, all the other services that go beyond just food, of college applications, AP tests, several different access points that are there, really, from a marketing standpoint, very important to let people know the benefit of filling out that information.
Yeah, the, the applications and the registration process too, right, for?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I was just kind of curious about the communication strategy to folks, but it sounds like, you know, there's, I don't know, we're learning new things every day, so it's exciting. But it sounds like, you know, they get, folks get text messages with the negative balance, you know, there's information points at the registration. I was just kind of curious about those things. Thanks for sharing.
Ms. Fulton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. And I think you answered one of my questions, because I was concerned about the federal guidelines, and whether our parents were getting that as well, and I appreciate that. And it is a sensitive situation with household, and what they want to share and what they will not share. I am godly proud that you do not and will not deprive our students of a meal, because we already know the fact that an empty stomach, you cannot learn well, or where you're coming from. I'm greatly reminded of a principal saying to me one time, how her, sometime, you know, it's just common when we say, thank God for the weekend. She said, but she feared the weekends because she didn't know what she was turning her students back to, and what they were, what they would be living in, what condition. But we have done things like the backpacks and sending them home with meals. I am grateful that our division, we are still doing some of those things as well, and we should continue those. What I'm looking at, when you said protecting what matters the most, that frame, and the third bullet, it has have them do chores or other works to pay for such meals or identify.
I'm sorry.
Will not.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's actually state law, Ms. Fulton, all these things are listed in the state law that you can't do, that you cannot.
Right, you know, when, when things go out and people read it, we want to make sure we are not. Thank you so much, appreciate that. One more question, I'd just like to say, well, you have the donations accepted. How do we reach out to make the community aware of this? I do know there's been a couple of women groups that has asked me, how do I get into a school? And one of them did, it was called the Daisy Chain, but they wanted a particular school. So how we, how are we making that information available to those donations? Because I'm being asked, how can I support a school and a student as well?
So we actually send out information based on that as well to the administration at the schools, but also on our website, so they can see it through School Cafe as well.
Well, it sounds like, you know, and I get it, but the ones that are asking me are not technically savvy, they're not going to go online and do that, so it look like I'm going to have to do more feetwork and get into the community and have a community town hall and let them know as well what we need. I was at an event just this past Saturday with a fraternity, trying to find out what more could they do in our school system in providing things for our student. So I guess it'd be my, my lip service and my feetwork. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers? Thank you for the presentation. Okay, just to piggyback off of Mr. Cummings, one of the things that maybe we should consider is, first of all, our VPI and pre-K program, those are across the city. I was at Three Oaks, as you know, that is not a school where they provided free and reduced lunches, but every single child in my classroom would have been eligible in some way if they were in that classroom. So, I mean, the federal requirements for Title I students are somewhat, some of them are socioeconomic, so I think that that would be maybe one area that we can look at, that's several hundred students that could be eligible, and maybe they don't have the understanding or the resources. That's just throwing that out there as a, students that we could be catching. Also, our homeless population, we definitely have students who are being housed, maybe with their grandparents, other family members that are in a nice school district, but yet they are unhoused, and so therefore their parents wouldn't have the resources to, and a lot of times too, when you are at a school that is not eligible as a whole school, you're embarrassed to say something. And so having that information readily available to parents, I think, is a good way to try and capture some of that other fifty percent. Because obviously, when you look at someone, I mean, I had, we've had unhoused students who live in Heritage Park. So, I mean, you don't know the situations, and there's no way to know, but I think having the information really super accessible to these parents, and that it's not a stigma or some, like, they don't have to go through a principal or like, and admit this, maybe even having a way, I, again, I don't know, do we have like an online form that people can fill out, and just being able to say, this is where you go, this is your access point, so you don't even have to tell anybody, you know, just keeping that information going. My other kind of question is about the debt collection. It seems like the amount of work that someone had brought up for a five-dollar debt isn't worth it.
We don't, we're not by law allowed to collect that anymore, so it's once they're no longer with us.
Right.
But you could. But you could, you can go back to the family and tell them and that we can't file a lawsuit against them till they're no longer a student.
Right, but Mike, I, I just mean like, of the two hundred, however, um, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, like, is some of this twenty years old? Like, you know what I mean? And is it, like, do we have like, big amounts, small, like, what are we chasing? And is it worth the amount of manpower that we're chasing it? Does that make sense?
So, I can take that.
Okay.
So, there's, there's layers to this. So, let me start with the, um, cause we've, we've had a couple of questions about um, the collections process.
Right.
So, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna reference your question, Ms. Weems, of a second grader that incurs fifty dollars worth of debt. So, I'm gonna assume in your scenario that that student didn't incur any more debt, that for the rest of the time that they came into school, they brought their own lunch. And they just received a notification every week until they were a senior that said that they were fifty dollars in debt and they never did anything about it. From a accounting standpoint, what she was trying to share is the, that food services account cannot cover that. So, they have fifty dollars on their record that they have to be able to do something about. So, what's done is it gets sent to the city for collections. No effort on our part whatsoever. It goes to collections and as Dr. Robertson said, we essentially don't see much money from that that comes back. Um, we're doing some, some greater amount of research, but the percentage is really small. So, Ms. Weems, in the scenario that you described, it would be like ten years later and fifty dollars would go to the city and we don't ever see, there's no effort, that's the city that does it, and then at some point, we may get a sliver of it back. Um, um, I wanna quote the number that we got in previous year was nine hundred-ish dollars. So, you can see the massive amount of debt and we got nine hundred in collections. So, remember, it's only when students transfer out. So, then the scenario that we just used, ten years, that fifty dollars, and this is saying for a student that never incurred any more debt, just sat on their books.
So, so I guess my question is then, that is something that we take a loss on and is that built into our budget? Because we are taking a loss on that.
That is, that is the ultimate point. Right now, we're at a loss of two hundred and fifty-ish.
Right.
A thousand dollars over a two-year period and it's, you saw how quickly it's going up.
Yes.
That's the challenge, that's why we're here presenting to you today.
Okay, because I, okay, and Mr. Kalin brought up last week about business decisions and having to make business decisions. And to me, I would rather spend that two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars on feeding children than maybe on transportation costs for a couple hundred kids. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, to me, it's more important that our children are fed in our schools instead of can we get them to whatever school they wanna go to? Like, that is a, uh, something I'm willing to, that's a sword I'm willing to die on because honestly, our kids will not learn if they're not fed. And that is the bottom line.
So, to be very clear, what you said that you don't wanna have happen was what uh, Ms. Amato made very clear upfront. We do not deny a meal.
Right.
They get the same meal, we don't serve alternate, they don't go-
But I'm willing to take on the debt of children whose families can't pay, is what I'm saying, as part of our budget, than not, because again, we should not, children should not go to school worried about, or not, they should get fed.
Yes, and functionally, how that would work is, so food services, it's its own separate budget.
Right.
They work on, based on their revenues and expenditures.
Right.
So, what you're describing is needing to take operating budget money and paying down the student meal debt. That is an authorized action to occur.
Okie doke.
I answered it for you. If I can just add, I think the real challenge that we have here and the reason we're sharing this with you is we have families that can pay that are not paying. That's the challenge.
Ms. Melnick?
So, you, you answered a lot of my questions, so you're always in the red. Okay. So, let's just say there's a child who is now in third grade and has a pretty large bill. So, is there a way then to reach out to the parents and say, hey, we see you have a very large bill here, have you considered applying for free and reduced meals? Or is that a way to kind of target some families? Does that happen?
So, we do that already with all of our notifications.
Okay.
Practically.
All right, and so my other question was, why don't we even get a percentage of that? But if, if, if their return is so small, I understand that now.
They'll take out the cost, they hire attorneys, the city handles, city treasurer's office handles it. The attorneys get to charge their costs and fees out of it before to return back, so.
Okay, all right.
Vice Chair Weems?
Um, yes, I agree that we have some folks in that two hundred and fifty-eight thousand that can pay. But we also have, in my opinion, obviously, a lot of folks in these um, thirty-eight CEP schools that can pay. For example, you know, I'm just gonna pick the top one, Allington. If I live in a ten million dollar house on the water in the back of Allington and I attend that school, my child is not paying anything for food, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I know the answer to this, but if you would please explain the crazy behind that. Cause I've had people come up and say, why is my child not needing to pay for lunch? This is ridiculous. Why are we not paying for lunch? And then, and then the kids start talking, you know, at youth group, and then they compare who's paying and who's not, and it's quite an interesting conversation.
So, it is through direct certification through the Virginia Department of Social Services that we can apply, it's forty percent is the level that we use at the Office of Food Services for a site location to be able to apply for CEP, which is Community Eligibility Provision, I apologize. So, the ISP is the individual um, student provision. And so, that goes in from the department through a direct certification from the student. So, there's, again, a lot of our homeless um, and migrant students are directly certified through the Department of Social Services, and that data is what we use.
So, is it law that you can't, I mean, the whole school, even though it's, it meets forty, so it meets forty percent threshold, so what if, so if one school is at forty-two, that means fifty-eight percent could pay, but they're not having to, is that like law? Is that just the way it's set up? It ju- it just doesn't make, make any sense for me.
So, the federal government just, we, so we would not be able to get the money
if we didn't say a hundred percent that the school's not paying?
We get reimbursement for those students either way.
I did, that is just sad, like-
Can you explain the benefit of doing that for those families that can't?
Right, that can't, we get four, the hundred percent of that forty percent. And so, with that, we don't have to worry about this process of have you applied, have you applied, have you applied? Where we only have thirteen thousand students outside of CEP schools. We're getting that whole population and we're getting that whole forty percent.
Right.
Versus not.
And so, even if parents say, yeah, we wanna pay for lunch, there's no way that they can actually do that. It would be like, impossible to do that.
They can donate to another school.
See, that's where you, it's a, that, that I think is where we've got to. It's kinda like, I've now forgotten when we had the bus issue where we were like, you know, if you can volunteer to drive to school for this, we had some sort of issue there, I've kinda forgotten that. But I think that's the key point, is we've gotta reach out to these schools that are on this li- list and say, you know, by the circumstances, you are allowed to never pay for food, but if you can, a donation to these following schools, that, I, I think in that opinion, that, that's the way to go. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta use that as, cause people don't know, people, li- literally, they're like, oh, we get free lunch. You know, that's crazy because I can afford it. But if they knew that, okay, now I'm gonna spend what I would on my child's lunch and send it to this school. I would love to see a campaign going forward with that.
So, um, I, uh, just wanted to make sure I go back through here. Um, there is nothing for the students that are on free and reduced lunch that identifies them separately from their peers that, that may not be on free and reduced lunch, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's good. Um, and then um, the students that have meal debts, are they being, they're not being identified either. It's only going straight to the parents, correct? Or the guardians. All right, that's great. And then, I did some quick math here. Um, it looks to me that the, at least the elementary school debt is about fifteen hundred per elementary school on average. Is that accurate?
About that, yeah.
Okay, and so, if we didn't apply for that CEP, we would probably be looking at roughly double uh, these, these numbers here in this meal debt.
Most likely, yes.
As our guess, yeah. All right, Ms. Melnick?
So, I think the picture that's painted here is just um, how large our food insecurity here is in Virginia Beach. And I think that's the number that citizens really don't know and understand. The amount of children who cannot afford to pay for meals in schools. And so, to Mrs. Weems' point, I like the word campaign. And perhaps um, that is something that we can do, um, especially targeting um, schools where every student is free and would you be willing to, you know, basically pay for another student? People, people are good, people have good hearts and I think if they knew and understood, um, I, I think they, they would help in that manner. And if you really wanna see, I keep telling you, come and join me at um, packing beach bags and see just how many we pack um, twice a week and how many are delivered. It's, it, it, it will blow your mind. It will blow your mind.
Ms. Fenton?
I would like to piggyback, or I don't like that word, but I'd like to join uh, Ms. Weems and Ms. Melnick in that campaign um, initiative. But I would love to make it as user, user-friendly as possible. Not a lot of language, not a lot of going through this process. Uh, like I said, whether we have to get out and, and beat the bushes, I'll say, we're gonna have more conversation. I would like to make it as easy as possible and go back to those women groups that are asking me, what more can we do? Thank you so much, the paperwork.
Thank you.
And I just wanna throw it out there, for five hundred dollars a year, you can sponsor a student. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that um, presentation and thank you for bringing awareness to that. And we are now moving on to the gifted education in VBCPS and we welcome Dr. Crystal Wilkerson, Director of Office K through twelve and Gifted Programs.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members and Dr. Robertson. I'm Crystal Wilkerson, Director of K-12 and Gifted Programs. I'm here today to provide you with the current update on our gifted programs and services. And joining me are the members of our gifted leadership team, coordinators, Mrs. Behuberopolis, Mrs. Scott. And as outlined on this slide, I will provide an overview of several aspects related to gifted services in Virginia Beach. VBCPS ensures our gifted identification process is in alignment with the Virginia Code that is outlined on this slide. I will pause while you preview its content. Students in grades two and five are universally screened in September through December using the Naglieri Nonverbal Ability Test or ENAT. Virginia Beach utilizes two ability assessments, one for screening and the other Cognitive Abilities Test or COGAT for identification purposes. This layered approach allows our district to use multiple data points rather than relying on a single measure, which supports a more comprehensive identification method. As a reminder, screening of grade one students changed to grade two in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. VBCPS utilizes a student profile, which is a multiple criteria approach to gifted identification, meaning we do not rely solely on one testing measure to identify students as required by VDOE. No single instrument, score, or criterion is used to exclude or include a child for eligibility. Rather, we examine the whole child with both qualitative and quantitative data. Displayed here is a brief overview of gifted learning for GIA students available in Virginia Beach. All K to two students receive talent development through differentiated curriculum and gifted teaching approaches that involve collaborative effort, efforts and co-teaching between GRTs and the classroom teachers. Students identified in General Intellectual Aptitude, or GIA, in grades three through twelve are those who show advanced reasoning, curiosity, language use, problem solving, and creativity across disciplines, indicating strong potential for success in a gifted program. Students are provided differentiated instruction to meet their diverse needs and ensure there is a match between a student's capabilities and gifted services. These services are delivered either at a student's comprehensive neighborhood school or in a resource cluster setting, or when admitted at Old Donation School in grades three through eight. Once identified as general intellectual aptitude by VBCPS, students have gifted services available to them through graduation. It's important to note that while gifted identification is not a requirement for acceptance until one of our many secondary academy programs, VBCPS proudly offers robust and rigorous learning pathways through our many academies such as Plaza Middle Years Program and our High School Academies. Students identified as intellectually gifted in grades three through ten receive services through the Gifted Resource Cluster Program in their comprehensive neighborhood school or at Old Donation School. At all settings, GIA students receive differentiated curriculum and instruction from their gifted cluster classroom teacher as well as a GRT, which many divisions do not offer, to meet their intellectual and social emotional needs. Curriculum instruction encompasses all objectives found in the Virginia Standards of Learning, expanding and extending specifically to meet the needs of gifted learners. When appropriate, the content is compacted and extended so that students are accelerated in their coursework. The pace in gifted cluster classes allows students to explore subjects in greater depth with additional intensity and through a conceptual lens. In the Elementary Resource Cluster Model, students are provided differentiated instruction to meet their diverse needs and ensure there is a match between a student's capabilities and gifted services. Opportunities are provided for enrichment and extension, data-driven small group instruction, and differentiated independent learning experiences. In K through two talent development, the GRT collaborates with classroom teachers to deliver extension activities through whole and small group lessons that nurture the talents of students even before formal identification occurs at the end of second grade. In grades three through five, identified gifted students are placed in resource cluster classrooms with a cluster teacher who partners with the GRT. Instruction is delivered through push-in and pull-out services with flexible grouping and differentiated strategies that promote higher-level thinking. Parents receive gifted learner updates that share demonstrated skills, goals, reflections, and progress. The middle school resource model allows students to have the opportunity to take advanced classes in English, science, and mathematics, or to begin a foreign language. Successful completion of advanced courses in middle school enables students to take advanced classes in high school, whether as part of advanced placement courses or at one of the high schools' advanced academic or academy programs. Gifted students are typically clustered within teams that offer both core and advanced classes, ensuring placement on a cluster team even without advanced course selections. This clustering enables the GRT to regularly coach, plan, and co-teach, and support teachers in delivering differentiated instruction. Students receive services through push-in, pull-out, and supplemental learning experiences that address both academic and social emotional needs. In high school, the Gifted Resource Cluster Program in grades nine and 10 offers services tied to core content to students through coaching and collaborative planning with teachers and by facilitating, facilitation of elective courses. These services provide resources, support, guidance, specialized curricula, and instructional strategies, as well as whole group and small group instruction. While cluster grouping of gifted learners is expected in grades nine and 10, it is optional for schools to extend clustering to grades 11 and 12. And students in these grades receive gifted support from the GRT. In addition, GRTs teach gifted learners Think Tank in grades nine and 10, Spark seminars in grades 11 and 12, and independent study in grades nine through 12 when students elect these courses. VBCPS also offers gifted programs in dance and visual arts that helps students develop their skills and creativity. Dance students work on technique, performance, and critical thinking, while visual arts students explore design, art, history, and hands-on projects. Collectively, these students demonstrate creativity, artistic curiosity, and advanced mastery of techniques, indicating strong potential for success in a visual or performing arts program. For gifted dance in grades six through eight, students continue with the once-a-week pull-out program at ODS. There are currently 241 students participating in gifted dance in grades three through eight. In grades three through five, both gifted visual arts and dance are offered through a once-a-week pull-out program at ODS, with 140 students currently participating in gifted visual arts in grades three through five. At the middle school level, gifted visual arts is integrated into the regular schedule for students enrolled at Virginia Beach Middle School, serving 163 students in grades six through eight. Gifted dance for grades six through eight continues in the once-a-week pull-out format at ODS with 241 students in grades three through eight currently participating. Over the next few slides, I will provide you with some of our gifted data, which has also been provided to you in your folders. Here, you see the number, the total number and percentages of VBCPS intellectually gifted students, along with a breakdown by grade level. I will pause a moment for you to review this information. The data displayed here shows the demographic breakdown of intellectually gifted students in VBCPS in all grades, which are grades three through 12, as well as a comparison of those grades that are reflective of the grades served at Old Donation School, which are grades three through eight. Again, I will pause a moment for you to review this information. This slide shows the distribution of intellectually gifted students in VBCPS receiving services at their home school, Old Donation School, and the Plaza Middle Years Program. Our home schools offer resource cluster services in grades three through 12. ODS serves grades three through eight. And the Plaza Middle Years Program serves grades six through eight. It would be important to note that students do not have to be identified as gifted to apply to and attend the Plaza Middle Years Program. However, of the 347 students enrolled at NYPD at the time of this data collection, 88% were identified as GIA. The data shown here is reflective of the distribution of high school intellectually gifted students in VBCPS receiving services at their home school or attending an academy. And finally, the theme for this year from the Office of Gifted Programs is unlocking possibilities, a year of purposeful practice, with a specific focus on intentional growth and reflection in gifted teaching and support in the resource cluster model. Turnkey professional learning led by GRTs will train staff on gifted identification and ensure cluster teachers consistently apply differentiated strategies, while second-grade teachers will receive a dedicated session. And resource cluster teachers will engage in goal-focused reciprocal learning walks. GRT professional learning will also focus on refining gifted instructional practices. This concludes our presentation from the Office of Gifted Programs. At this time, I invite up to the podium our gifted coordinators. And we welcome any questions that you might have at this time.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, I have three quick questions. The first is Slide six. You mentioned sixth graders being able to take a language. But that's only at ODS and Plaza, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if you're identified gifted in any other middle school, you cannot take a language?
Correct. So you can, you can, water bottle. So you can take an exploratory elective in any other sixth grade, in any other school.
But if you're identified gifted, just like they are in these two programs, actually, a portion of the students, you mentioned, a portion, 88% at Plaza are identified gifted, but the other percentage, they can still take a language in sixth grade?
They can take an elective, not a full-year language. So the difference between the two programs, ODS, it's a requirement that they have three electives. One of those requirements being a world language. At NYPD, the IB program, it requires the same thing. Three electives, one of those must be a world language. So in those programs, sixth grade can take a full, like a Spanish one. In the other schools, non-traditional schools, because they get two electives, and there are exploratory world languages in sixth grade. In seventh grade, they could take a world language one.
So, ah. You know, I love you all, but we have 5,893 identified students who cannot take a language in sixth grade. Yet we're targeting only kids in a certain school, which actually puts those students at an advantage when it comes to GPAs and all the stuff that follows from grade six on. So we're actually not doing a service to students.
Which is based on the program requirement.
Yes, but they're identified gifted. And they might not get into Old Donation or NYPD, but they're ready for a language in sixth grade. Okay, so I'm gonna go ask my next question because I'm sure I've teed that up. I'm so sorry. How many students take advantage of the gifted specific electives in high school? So you mentioned independent study, spark, and think tank. Is it a fair amount?
We talked about that right before this, and we knew you were gonna ask that. And we do not have specific numbers. Not you specifically, but we figured that might be a question. We don't have specific numbers, so we'll get that information for you. We were just talking about that. I don't want to, I don't want to tell you wrong, so we'll get that for you.
Because I would imagine, you know, it really starts coming down to college applications and what is somebody taking and what will, what will an AP blah, blah, blah? How will that translate better than spark or independent study?
Right, so one of the, one of the challenges has been the weight of those courses. Because it's only a, it only weighs half instead of a full. So that's been one of the challenges when they talk about their GPAs. So, yes, but we can get those numbers for you.
So this, this would not be for you, but I'll throw it out there. Just what do we spend on transportation, transporting? I'm an arts person, so this is difficult for me, but it's one that popped up. For dance and visual arts, what do we spend on transportation for those once-a-week programs?
I think we would have to get back to you on that as well.
And that's fine. I, you know, I hate to, to, to give you more. But, you know, I'm just wondering, and what percentage of those students? So like the visual arts students, how, how many of them apply to? Do they apply to Virginia Beach Middle School to be in the art program?
And matriculate.
Okay.
Well, some of them could apply at that particular age and grade, but they would matriculate if they were already a part of the program from ODS. Does that make sense?
Yes, so they're already, okay.
You can, you can apply at any, at any time.
But we have dance students in middle school that we bus to ODS?
So we do. We have dance students in middle school, yes.
And visual arts students, okay.
But.
No, oh, they only go to VB middle? There's no visual arts program at?
At ODS for middle school, no.
Just, just dance?
Correct.
Okay, so that's probably the number I need. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the art program is, is one day a week. But once they go to middle school, it's a full-time program, so.
It's not all the students one day a week. It's five days a week, groups that come?
Correct.
Okay.
Through a middle school.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much. So I own one of those gifted students that is in the cluster model. And I have so many questions. First of all, on Slide eight, you guys discussed differentiated instruction through enrichment. How many K to five teachers and six to eight teachers have the gifted certification in our, outside of ODS besides the GRT?
That would be a question for HR that they would have to, I don't.
Okay.
We can run those numbers and get them back to you.
Okay, and, and the reason I'm asking is because I know at ODS the students do have access. All their teachers have that gifted certification. And again, as Mrs. Melnick has pointed out, is while differentiated instruction is good, if we have some gifted students that have access to all gifted certified teachers and others that only have access to their GRT, it is unbalanced. And that is something that is highly concerning to me, especially having one of those students, oh no. Okay, sorry, my computer just went eh for a minute. I have a question also on Slide 12. For our data review, is the percentages, like for the total amount of students we have, like you've got intellectually gifted students, three to 12, there's a number and then the percentage. Is that percentage of gifted students or percentage of the total number of students that we have? I was a little confused on that one. Did my making sense?
So on the top row, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so you've got the data review demographic, demographic breakdown, and you've got like 5,325 students, and that's 47.1%, and that's just of gifted students, right? Not of the total population of VBCPS students. And I'm asking because as you go down and you break it down by ethnic group, you've got percentages there, and that's not for all of VBCPS. That's for all of our gifted students, right?
So the total number of gifted students is the 11,316.
Right.
Out of the total number of students that are in.
Right, identified?
No, in grades three through 12.
That is the total number of identified students in grades three through?
The, the chart, total enrollment for grades three through 12 is 48,388. Of the 48,388 students, there are 11,316 who are identified intellectually gifted, which is 23.4% on Slide 12.
Okay, but I'm saying the percentages that they have for like male, female, American Indian, all of those. Is that percentage the total for the percentage of gifted or the percentage out of our whole student population?
It's the percentage of the group in the population. So for example, on Slide 13, if you look at female, boy, I need to, I definitely need to get glasses. 5,325 females in grades three through 12 that have been identified as intellectually gifted.
So that's 47% of the identified, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what my question, yes. I was asking if it was the gifted population or 40%, 7% of the total student population. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes, in one chart, it was a total, but in this chart, it was of the gifted population.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask. Okay. So I was a little confused there and, and I wanted to clarify that. On the next slide, and I'm using the, what we got, and I'm off, I think by a slide or two because the data review for percentage of gifted and homeschool, donation, Plaza, you guys have a chart, and I got it without the chart, it's fine. Only 17% of our gifted students are at ODS. And 78% are enrolled in their home school for three to eight, according to these numbers. So why is the funding so much lopsided, the opposite direction? Where 60% of our funding is going to ODS, I think is what it was, or? It, it was absolutely lopsided. We spend way more than 17% of our funding. Why is that?
Well, I'm not sure if that's a fair question to ask them.
Okay.
Because, yeah, but it's a good question. It's a question for the board because you're operating an entire school setting at Old Donation School, which includes all the costs of running that particular school versus at the home school. You're providing a gifted resource teacher to serve those students.
To me, though, this shows us that we are not serving our gifted population by housing it in one building. We are only, not even hitting 20% of our kids with all of those services. And that is a super huge concern for me because gifted education is a portion of our special education, and we are required to service all of our students and give them all options. And as Ms. Melnick so eloquently pointed out, even like my son self-taught himself both German and Russian, but he is in eighth grade and just being allowed to take a language this year, even though he has been teaching himself by himself for the last year and a half. So again, he's gifted, but he doesn't have the same access. And so this is where I am experiencing as a parent, and I am really concerned that we are not giving all of our gifted students, especially our twice-exceptional students, the same amount of access that are at their home schools. I can speak from experience. A lot of times, one gifted resource teacher is not enough. You guys talked about a co-teaching model. We were sending second graders to ODS. We were sending second graders to ODS before, and now we can't. So, does that not then leave our GRT with co-teaching a whole nother set of students in second grade, or in second grade now, that they weren't teaching last year? So, that then pulls from our resources, from our one GRT, they're now having to teach a whole new grade level as a co-teacher. And so, again, that leaves less time for them to service the eighty percent of the gifted population in our schools. So, you can see where I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say. Those one GRT are spreading themselves amongst eighty percent of our gifted population, and our twenty percent have multiple teachers that are gifted, I, um, certified. And so, it's, it's very lopsided, so I will yield.
Mr. Bownstiel?
Okay, well, I agree a lot with Ms. Rogers said, but I'm still confused on the forty-seven percent. That was kind of my question, cuz I was looking at the twenty-three over here, and then I just did the top, top row of females. And I'm still kinda like, the forty-seven, what, what is that based on, if you know what I'm trying to get at?
So, you're talking about, you're back to the demographic breakdown slide?
On thirteen, yes, ma'am.
So, you're, um, so, for this slide, they took the overall percentages from the, the breakdown of the over? They took the percentage from the individual breakdown from the overall number of identified students within grades three through twelve.
Okay.
So.
So, of gifted students, forty-seven percent of them were identified as females. So, of the identified gifted, intellectually gifted population, forty-seven percent of that population is female.
Oh, welcome, all right, thank you.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, I have two questions. The first question I have, Dr. Wilkinson, uh, and you don't have to flip back to it. Slide five, you talk about how, um, we look at the whole child, uh, quantitative and based on qualitative, uh, data as well. So, my question is related to our students who are in the dance and, and visual art program, because I would assume there, that we use different criti, well, we have to use different criteria, because you have to have that talent. So, what, what is used differently to ensure, um, that they meet the criteria that the committee is looking for to participate either at VB Middle or at ODS?
I'm gonna yield it to Ms. Scott, because she just went through. We just completely did a revamping, and she was an integral part of that, so I'm gonna let her speak on that, so you wanna?
All right, so, for the last two years, we've really worked to refine and revise our art and dance audition process for gifted identification for art and dance. So, for visual arts, I'll start there. Um, every student who applies has the opportunity to apply online and create a portfolio. All the students have the same portfolio requirements. Then, we have groups of art teachers from around the division go through, and there's a rubric that they use, and they screen the portfolios. Um, this is all outlined and updated with our local plan that we implemented in the twenty-four, twenty-nine local plan. So, then, after the screening process, a portion of the students move on to an audition process. That is a half-day, approximately in-person audition at Old Donation School that is facilitated by the gifted visual arts teachers in conjunction with the Office of Gifted Programs and the visual, um, visual arts department. So, then, we have, they, we have students who participated in person. It is a blind process, inasmuch as the students are given a number and a letter, and then, when they go to a committee, completely different people review the portfolio components of what they did in the in-person, in-person audition. So, the, um, people who make up the visual arts committee are gifted resource teachers, other art teachers, people from the D-Tol administrators, school counselors. There's a training process they go through before the, um, committee meets, and so that we have calibration throughout to make sure that we are consistently making decisions, um, of what a visual artist, like, what requirements are. For dance, um, it's slightly different. Every student who applies for the dance program gets an audition, and that is an in-person audition, and we have, again, really worked for the last two years to refine that process as well. So, our Health and PE Department and our Performing Arts Department, in a conjunction with our office, have worked to create a rubric that reflects state standards, while also looking at what does it mean to be a gifted dancer? After the audition per, process, which is led by the gifted art, uh, the gifted dance teachers, but again, overseen by the three offices, then there's a committee that meets, and again, we have calibration. They see a video of each student performing in two different areas. There's kind of a, with the calibration, they look to see, do the students meet certain criteria that match what the program is, is working towards?
All right, so, my follow-up question, thank you, and, and I was very familiar with that process to a certain extent, because we need to, used to provide the counselors for you. So, what happens, because you only have, let's say, X amount of seats, but you have quite a few applicants who, who are eligible. So, my question is, the students who are not able to make the seats for the, uh, programs at both sites, how are they supported in a cluster model at their school? Because they still meet the criteria, it's just that they did not make the cut for, say, the fifty or sixty seats that you may have?
So, for art and dance, it is different, there's not a cap, um, at this point. And so, um, for the last two years, at least, um, every student who has met the threshold of what the committee determines is the, the identification process, um, has had the opportunity to attend the art or dance program, um, if they choose to, once they're identified.
Okay, and my last question, do we still do, I think it was called Bright Sparks? The, uh, or Sparks, it used to be a Saturday morning program, um, for type? That's what it was, for Title One, yeah, for Title One schools. Do we still do that? Because that was a great, or, or hopefully, it still is a great program, that helps also with identification.
We do, we do still, um, involve our parents. It's a way for us to engage families and students together, and it gives us, um, a way for us to give some exposure to students and for us to start those anecdotal notes, um, so that we can start to see some of those glimmers of gifted characteristics for our students, um, for identification that moves, um, into that process as they get a little bit older, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Sorry. Uh, first and foremost, uh, just thank you for this follow-up, as I know is an ask from the retreat, and I'm glad to see that, you know, you satisfied the ask about looking at academic outputs of the cluster versus the, uh, ODS model of gifted education. I went back and re-watched some of the retreat, cuz that's what I do with my free time in life, and just to see, you know, to, to prepare for this discussion, um, because I wanted to see some of the topics we covered, and also see, you know, some of the questions were asked, and if, you know, those action items. So, I do appreciate, you know, your attentiveness to what was asked and delivering on that. And so, I echo similar questions and inquiries as I look at specifically the SOL data and funding, um, differences between the two models. And so, you know, I see that our students, I just did napkin math, so these are, you know, public, please don't quote me as exact numbers, these are just me doing my napkin. I see about a plus twenty percent difference in English for ODS students, a plus twenty percent difference in math for ODS students in past advanced category. And then, a plus ten in science and plus fourteen, and this is all in that past advanced, uh, category. And so, I was just kinda quickly doing a quick comparison, and so, I think there's two ways that folks would look at this, is one is like, well, you know, does ODS, you know, see the kids at ODS are the most gifted of the gifted, or something like that? While the counterargument that that could be, well, they also have extensive resource allocation, um, that, and access to, you know, a more, I would say, more structured, you know, learning environment and more, you know, investment. So, I'm kinda curious, one, if you get, well, I guess my question is, is like, walk me through how you would see some of the, the differences in, you know, kind of these outputs and whatnot? What are your general observations and, and thoughts in these? You know, we have two different models. Overall total passing, I mean, is pretty much similar, but, you know, past advanced category does have, I would say, plus twenty percent is a significant difference. I'm just kinda curious, like, what, what, uh, the why?
Well, uh, without the data in front of me, I will offer a couple comparisons, so.
Yeah.
When you look at ODS, uh, let's say, grade four or grade three reading, and you compare that to grade three reading to, to some of our elementary schools that have enough, um, uh, high intellectually gifted kids in a particular class where the entire class is, like, a class that they might get at ODS, there's virtually zero difference between the scores. There probably is some difference in the past advanced scores. The pure nature of ODS is it's, was created as a school for the top, the most, yeah, the top, top, I don't wanna use the wrong term and inflame anyone, but the, the, the top group of students from an intellectual standpoint that need something extra. And, um, they are delivering, uh, that. And the purpose of this presentation was to give you a holistic view of what we're doing with gifted services in Virginia Beach. And, and I would say that one thing I appreciate about this board is you guys have a spirit of continuous improvement, because you're not afraid to uncover challenging conversations. But I would offer that what we provide in Virginia Beach is pretty extraordinary if you look holistically at any other school division in the Commonwealth. We have a robust K-two, K-two talent development program that's been refined, thanks to the work of the gifted office under Dr. Wilkinson. When kids go to grades three through five, they have a cluster model that we will continue to refine, and I, I'm gonna pass around this sheet, starting with Mr. Cowan. And I absolutely encourage you to look at these dates and see if you'd be available to go take a visit to one of those schools and see the cluster model, because you're gonna see, uh, like you see when you visit any of our schools, examples of excellence and examples of areas where we can improve. And for those students who are really at the top of the game, they can go to ODS in grades three through five. Then, when you go to middle school, we're not done, we still have the cluster, we still have ODS, but now, we add a third program, Plaza NYPD, and a fourth program, Virginia Beach Middle School of Art and Dance. So, now, we've expanded in middle school to serve those students. But not to be outdone, you go to high school, we have two advanced academic programs, seven academy programs, a public-private charter school, the Governor's School for the Arts, the Advanced Technology Center, and the Technical Career Education Center. And the, oh, and by the way, the Environmental Brock, the Science Program of the Brock Center. So, we, we do everything we possibly can to make sure our students are challenged intellectually to the very best of our ability, and we will not stop trying to continue to do that. And that's why these conversations are important to have.
Base Chair Williams?
Um, thank you. You probably don't have this, but I'm just curious about this number, and you can get back to us. From VB Middle, from the, from the, um, dance and the visual arts program, or from, from that program, wherever it's located, do, is there a large percentage of those students who then apply and are accepted at Salem Academy and/or the Governor's School of Arts? I would just like to, yeah, I, I would think that percentage would, I, I would think it should be high, but I, I would love to see that, out of curiosity.
We'll get that information for you.
And I will, if you don't mind.
And, um, also, um, yeah, and so, with, with the conversation of the Spanish and the gifted, is, is there a correlation that, like, you need to be gifted to be able to handle a foreign language? Or is, is there, do gifted students do better in foreign language? Because I, I've never heard that, but it seems like that, that was kind of what, what I was getting at, out of the conversation on this side, not from y'all, but is there any correlation from gifted and foreign language?
No, they're at, you're talking about because the reference to, that was part of the, the program?
Yeah.
No, not necessarily, in fact, um, not everyone is, uh, who is identified as gifted is gifted in all things, and so, um, there, there isn't necessarily a correlation, uh, per se.
Okay, so, so basically, it was just the program because you have an extra elective? I mean, the, the program has three electives at Plaza and?
Yes, we also have to understand that where you offer something. For example, if we say we offer Spanish one in sixth grade at our comprehensive schools, a student's gonna get Spanish in PE, and that's it. So, you've eliminated the opportunity for band, you've eliminated the opportunity for orchestra, you've eliminated the opportunity for tech ed, teen living, art, Spanish exploratory, French exploratory, computer. So, we have to be careful, because when we get to sixth grade, the idea is that you're exploring and interested and need. It's then gonna chart your pathway to seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh. So, we gotta be very careful where we say, okay, if we offer this, we could very well be cutting another program. So, we have to be mindful of that, because what we really want for our sixth grade students are, this is their first time going from possibly two teachers to seven, to possibly engage and learn, do I want Spanish exploratory, or do I want French? They can take them both and decide which pathway they choose. So, they only get two electives in your traditional middle schools. So, I wanna be very careful, because they're gonna have to make a decision based on, do I want Spanish one in sixth grade? Or do I wanna explore band? And to the question of world language, it starts world language one in seventh grade, as long as you have the prerequisite. And you take pre, or you can take Spanish one and two, and I'm just using that world language as an example, in eighth grade. So, just wanted to put that out there, because sometimes, the great thing is that we have so many offerings. The hard thing is that we have so many offerings. See, there's, there's a balance. And if we're gonna allow choo, students to choose and explore, sometimes if we're adding this, we can be eliminating something else. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Oh, I'm, I, I wasn't necessarily saying add it for sixth and seventh, because that's only one year. I mean, I think that the question is, you know, with this other stuff, do you add at an earlier age? But sixth and seventh, to me, is, and I understand that the exploratory, and I do agree that when you keep adding, like, a teacher at my school just told me, she goes, I think I'm gonna be bumped out of a job in a couple of years, cuz we keep adding electives. And she's a specialty elective teacher, and she's really worried about that. Yeah, so, I to, yeah, I totally agree. Okay, so, just let me re, make sure I have this clarified. So, with the dance and the visual arts programs, there is no waiting list, everybody?
It hasn't been thus far, that's correct, for those that have been identified.
Okay, I've got some questions about that offline, thank you.
So, everybody's gone except for, um, Ms. Dwyer, um, so, Ms. Dwyer?
I just had a quick comment, um, and on the heels of what Carolyn was talking about and, and Dr. Robertson. I mean, my head was spinning at the extensive grueling process to be in gifted dance or the visual arts. That is a lot, that is a lot. And I was like, wow, that's amazing. So, I'm really impressed by that, that those kids come in and they go through that process willingly. And I see why we have the number of students that we do, cuz it's a lot. And, but it does, it speaks volumes to me. So, really impressed with that standard, thank you.
And I actually, I have a couple of questions. So, in a quick search, and I don't wanna be quoted on it now.
So in a quick search, and I don't want to be quoted on it necessarily because it was a quick search, but I see that other divisions may be using a 95% for identification. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that number is variable. I mean, it does vary depending upon location, geographic area, yes, that's true.
So, and based on what I was searching in the state of Virginia, are you aware of other divisions in the state of Virginia that are using a 95% for gifted identification instead of 90?
I don't know specifically the places, but yes, there are, yes. There are other places that use 90, there are other places that use 95.
Okay, so because I was looking to see, you know, averages, state averages, national averages, and, you know, our numbers here in Virginia Beach for gifted identification are much, much higher than other areas. And so, and I know that, you know, that's in part due to the fact that we have created a scenario where we're trying to make sure we're identifying as many students as are gifted are and not miss anybody and overlook anybody. But it seems to me like that number is very high.
The identification number, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So just as a reminder, the 90th percentile that you're referencing is just a point of entry. So the 90th percentile is where we look at that number for us to say, this student may be exhibiting some gifted characteristics. And so, again, any student who is moving on in the process for identification, their parent still has to submit that application, and they still have to go through that multiple criterion process. So that is really just one factor that is looked at. But that 90th percentile doesn't have to be. So a parent can recommend a student even if they haven't met that threshold. That can still happen. So that's just one of the ways in which we use as our measure to look at for those, that student might be exhibiting some of those characteristics. But that's just, that really isn't a determining factor. That's just saying that they would exhibit some characteristics potentially to make us talk to that parent to say, you might want to consider that application process, because they have to still go through that, so the application and identification process that we talked about in the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I also am interested in the participation in Spark and Think Tank, because I kind of tend to wonder if maybe those gifted resource teachers at high school level might be better applied elsewhere. So I'd be very interested to hear that data. And then I just want to really briefly touch on, you know, the funds being spent at ODS for gifted education, you comment, because the cost of teachers that are teaching these students is part of that funding mechanism, and all of those students will have a teacher regardless of whether or not they're at ODS or not. And so if that cost is folded into that, it's kind of really not an apples-to-apples comparison. Anyway, Ms. Melnick?
Let me go back to the language piece with Old Donation. Does every sixth grader take a language at ODS? So they don't have the exploratory option. So they're being, and as was stated in this presentation, not every gifted child is gifted in everything. So there might be sixth graders at ODS that cringe at the thought of having to take a language in sixth grade, and they don't feel prepared. But we could have students who are at X middle school who are so ready to take a language and be able to get credit for it, and that's where I feel that discrepancy is. Like, okay, well, if you're at ODS, everybody's ready for a language, whether you think you're not, you are or not. And we're then forcing technically kids at a regular middle school, regular middle school, into taking classes they may not even be interested in, tech ed or teen living or band or any of those things. They just really might want to focus on a language. I mean, my colleague's kid is one of them, who is an identified gifted student who is now teaching himself a language because it wasn't available for him and he was ready for a language. And so that's my point with all of this, is that we're kind of leaving 5,700 kids dangling with a potential, there's a potential opportunity for kids who feel ready to take a language, and we're keeping that from them, but they're identified gifted. Now, to, you know, to Mrs. Brown's point, you know, our gifted numbers are high, but, I mean, it's, the gap is huge for the differences really to bubble to the top. I mean, like, I guess I never really even thought about it. What some kids are getting, and I think really, because the GPA piece is what's really kind of irritating to me. It wouldn't matter if everybody were recognized with the GREEK system, but since we do have valedictorian and salutatorian, we're actually giving an advantage to those sixth graders in our middle school program, gifted programs, that they have an opportunity for an extra credit a year early. It's always been talked about, but I just really never kind of applied it. You know, it certainly matters what they take beyond that to get to number one or number two, but they're starting out with an advantage. And there are 5,783 students who are identified gifted who might really want to take a sixth grade language, so.
Ms. Rogers? And also to kind of talk about what Mrs. Brown discussed with having those teachers. I agree with you that every student is going to have a teacher, but our gifted students should have just as much access to as many gifted instructors as they need. There are students at ODS who may, you know, it's all, you get all gifted instruction at ODS. If you have a student who is twice exceptional, that perhaps is gifted in math and struggles with language arts, they don't get that gifted language arts teacher and not gifted, you know, regular teacher at their homeschool. That's kind of what I was getting at, asking about gifted endorsements, is that every teacher has that, or, you know, certification at ODS, but only 17% of our kids have access to that. And so that really is what, for me, is an issue, because many, we have way too many identified students not getting access. And so I think that, for me, that's the hardest part, is that those kids could certainly use that support, and they're not getting it.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, thank you. And I appreciate you sharing everything that you guys are doing in our long-range gifted plan there. And it is 5:18 PM, and we are going to recess for dinner, and we will reconvene it. Yes. You have your forecast of regular school board meeting agenda topics for the second quarter, October, November, December in front of you, if you could take a look at that. It looks like Mr. Cummings has something to add, but Dr. Robertson, do you have anything you want to say first about that?
So the forecast is really a planning tool, just as a reminder for the board as we map out what the next three months can possibly look like. It's always subject to change based upon what happens just in the day-to-day business of the division, new information that comes out or through agenda planning. But the forecast does have what we have right now planned to do. There is a couple of additions. On October 28th, under information, we'll have to add middle school dual-language immersion recommendations, and then that'll follow in November, on November 10th, under action, middle school dual-language immersion recommendations. So those two are not captured on here. Otherwise, everything we have is captured on here for the next three months.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I just have one quick addition or possible idea for this quarter. It could, you know, be delayed if it needs to be, but I would like to see an update on our, you know, as we've moved into streaming meetings and everything, I would like to see some type of update on how that's going and information with possible avenues for expansion. I know that we've had some private conversations about streaming to different services and whatnot using, you know, AI-generated summaries. So I'd like to see somewhere in the cadence if there's a workshop and if possible things that, you know, we can vote on to increase transparency in the board and public accessibility.
Now, I just want to verify, we haven't had all of our committee meetings streamed yet, correct? Okay.
Yeah, we're working through, part of it was making sure we're scheduling the rooms where we had the capability to do that in there. So we're working through the committees and getting those, so some have and some haven't yet. So as we're setting committee meetings for this year, we're trying to schedule it in here. And so some of the committees start, PRC start a little bit earlier than the other ones, so we're still working through the process.
Okay, so we're probably looking towards the end of this for a workshop on that then?
Yeah, I was thinking towards the end, so I just wanted to see it on there so that we keep the momentum going.
All right, thank you. And it is now 5:22 PM, and this is going to be recess, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for a formal session.